To lead us in the, in, in the opening prayer, after which Councilmember Colin Erickson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, let's remember Johnson.
Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity to be here tonight. We're so thankful for our community and all the blessings that we have being able to live here. We ask that please bless us to make sound decisions and to love each other and listen to each other. And please help us to travel home in safety when the time comes. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, council members. I appreciate that. And welcome, everyone. We'd like to move on with the roll call of the city council members, please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Councilmember Erica.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Rita.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. First off, we'd like to welcome one of our new employees for our City of Rexburg team, and that is Mr. Jared Martin. He's here with us. We'd like to invite him to the podium to tell us a little bit about himself. Who in the IT department, I should say.
Yeah, IT department. So I'm from Idaho Falls. Most recently, I just moved back from Utah. Spent some time down, I went to school at College of Eastern Idaho in Idaho Falls, worked for Sarina Networks, and then went down and worked for the state of Utah for a couple of years and finally made it back and found this opportunity. So I'm just glad to be back home and glad to be up here. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. And welcome, welcome to our Rexburg family. We appreciate you. Look forward to working with you. Okay, let's move on to item number four is a presentation from Mr. Brock Walters about the Lightbridge broadband update. Thank you for being here.
Council and Mayor, thank you for having me here. Um, is it easy for everybody? Just wanted to give a quick update with how the Lightbridge project is going across the city. First, for anybody that maybe not wasn't part of where this started, why fiber? Why is the city so involved in wanting to have fiber across the entire city? And they started off with this project to get these backbone, you could say, rings throughout the city to try and bring that next generation of connectivity to the whole community. They saw the value with that, and we've already presented on that in the past, but just wanted to bring that up. In the last four months, we worked September, October, November, and then here in April, we've put in 120,000 feet of main line. So that's all along the sides, right in the easements of the road conduit to place fiber to give everyone the opportunity. So here, this week, we'll be releasing the last work orders, and that'll be all the work orders released for the west side of, you could say, the railroad tracks where they come through town. We've also started on one, you can see just a little bit right there, it's kind of hard to see, over on the east side of town, over behind where the Mandarin Restaurant is.
Okay.
And so we've started on that area as well.
Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge area, yes. And so with that, we've already connected 200 homes with 160 that are actively either being worked on or they're being provisioned. And so with that, we have over 1,000 customers or residents of the community that have already expressed that they would like fiber at their home. And, and why? Why is this so important?
Quick question. When you say 200 plus connected, does that mean that they are live?
Yes.
On the internet?
Yes. It's like 204 or something, live on the internet. They're on the service today.
Okay. Okay. Because my home's connected, but it's not live.
Not live yet.
So we're just...
Just anxiously waiting for that.
Anxiously waiting then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So you're, I believe you're on Widdison, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So they have the drop, they have the electronics ready. We haven't spliced. You're part of that 160 right there?
Perfect.
As well as I think Mayor is, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to show this graph.
Oh, hey, before we leave that, how do we know when we're connected?
Uh, there's communication from us as well as from the ISP that you've chosen.
As my wife keeps saying, can I, can I discontinue what we've got? I said, no, not quite yet, I don't think.
So yours?
Nancy.
If you're looking for yours, they're going to do splicing over the next week or two, and then that whole community will be connected. And then your community got held up by, they have to set what's called a fiber hub, and they needed a few road bores that didn't happen last fall. So they're setting that right now on Pioneer. They'll get the fiber and spliced through that.
Cool. Okay, awesome.
One of the interesting graphics and why this is so important for the community is you'll see 49% of the customers or people that have chosen to go with the Lightbridge project are asking for a gig service. And 67% are gig plus. So these are speeds that we're not going to be seeing on other mediums besides fiber. So that's why, as, as your community has chosen to really look towards the future for what the broadband could really offer to homes, they may not need a gig today. Honestly, a lot of homes don't need necessarily a gig. But this provides them that opportunity as we go forward to have these capabilities ubiquitous across the whole community. That the, you know, I mentioned in the first slide, whether it's telehealth or home learning or whether it's growing the economy here, that it provides that across the whole community. So. More questions? I just wanted to say thank you. We've had a lot of people in the community. I had a guy, I don't know his age, I would have guessed 80. I was standing on the side of the road over in Summerfield, and we were talking amongst ourselves, and he approached us and said, is this one of those fiber projects where they have multiple providers? And I said, yes, it is. And he said, I just moved from Texas and thank you because I just moved from an area that had that, and I really value. And anyways, he understood the value of what that means to bring in an open access fiber internet because of the competitive nature, bringing down the price, as well as reliable and good internet for the whole community. So anyways.
Great. Any further questions? Yes, go ahead.
How do you decide which neighborhood you're gonna hook up next? I'm just curious how...
Whoever pays them the most.
No. So actually, what we did is we've just been moving basically from west to east across the city.
Okay, so just kind of go systematically?
We are. We're not picking and choosing. So we, we started in that Henderson area. Can't really see it very well. Maybe I can zoom in or something. Is that helpful if I zoom in and show you?
I think we know where Henderson is.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a laser on this thing, maybe? The green button right there. So right down here, we started here last, last year just because it was ready to be built. That's where logically, engineering wise. And then we moved on to the Summerfield area, and I think it's called Willow or Willow Brook.
Willow Brook.
And so that was built all last year, a lot of that. And then what we've done is just moved from west to east. And so that's why this railroad track, I'd said we will have released all the work orders by the end of this week for everything west of that.
When you say release the workers, you mean homes to be connected?
All of the work for the mainline construction
Okay.
Will have been released. There's about
Okay.
A little bit right here, just in town that we're releasing. The rest of it has already been released. They're actively building Valleywide area. The airport just finished, I believe, today, that road. And this area up in Circle, no, 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 I forget the name of the subdivision.
Sunset Circle.
K Street area, that is, I believe, complete or just getting cleaned up. And this area down, we call it Rock Creek area.
Oh, yeah.
And that has another, till the end of this week or early next week, all the main line will be in, all the main conduit along the easements. Then we'll be moving in right here into that stone, what, Stone Bridge, Stone Brook? And then next, we'll be going over to this Barney Dairy area. And then there's some build out downtown that still needs to happen across. Our focus has been residential.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the downtown area with the businesses have choices already today with fiber. One, two, three, sometimes choices. And so our focus, we're not going to exclude businesses. We'll definitely serve businesses and MDUs, but we want to make sure that the residential has choice. So we'll build that, and then the hill will most likely be next year. So, does that help answer your question?
So I live in the neighborhood, K Street, that you spoke about, just finished.
Oh, awesome.
And they're putting what they call the gray boxes in
Okay.
With the ONT placement in, on the inside. So from that point until actual connectivity, how much time?
So what they will do is, so right in here, what they'll start doing now is they finished that orange pipe, that conduit, they're gonna start placing all the fiber inside of there. They call it blowing fiber, because they actually will use a compressor and blow air to help push it through. And then from that, they'll splice in all those green boxes that are along the, the lot lines that you've seen get put in this last few weeks. And then from there, you would have a connection to your home once they're finished splicing. So between now and then, it will be probably closer to the end of May that you wouldn't see service at your house.
About a month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? For Mr. Walters? If not, thank you very much. We appreciate that update.
Yeah, thank you. That's been, that's been a huge project.
Yeah.
It seems to have gone pretty well. I haven't heard too many complaints other than, you know, when's it, when's it gonna come live?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, the excitement is the biggest part, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, at this point, item number five on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comments? If so, please come up to the podium, state your name and address at this time.
Thank you. My name is David Merrill, 602 Autumn Court here in Rexburg. I guess we are last on the hill for fiber. So on behalf of the Harvest Heights Neighborhood and the Homeowners Association, I want to make you aware of a traffic and safety concern related to westbound traffic on the east end of Seven South.
East end of Seven South.
We're talking the stretch of Seven South from Mill Hollow West to Second East. There's an increased amount of traffic on that segment that, that do not comply with the posted 35 mile an hour speed limit. And again, as I stated, from, from Mill Hollow heading west down to that three-way stop sign at Fourth East is the segment that we're most, that we're seeing most of the trouble with. Traffic is very fast. We often see 50 to 60 mile an hour vehicles coming around, and if you've driven that, you know there's a couple of curves. And entering into our neighborhood on Autumn Drive, we have a line of sight issue because of some large evergreen trees. So when we're trying to come out and we're trying to look to the east on Seven South before we turn right, we have a very limited line of sight because of the trees. We're working with Richard Smith on trying to trim those trees back. We're accidentally cutting them down. But even with that line of sight problem, the traffic coming around that curve is, is pretty dangerous. We also have people walking in the morning on their, on Seven South roadway, usually on the north side of Seven South. And since there are no sidewalks there, again, they're at risk because of this high-speed traffic coming around those corners. We also have a pretty consistent problem with what we call high-performance motorcycles going up and down Seven South and across Mill Hollow in the evenings being pretty common. We would like to formally request some traffic monitoring or policing in that space. I noticed on Second East, by the water tower, for a number of months, there was a radar enhanced signboard that would record your speed and give you a warning message about this is not a raceway or something or other. And we were wondering if we could request that signage and that radar enhanced sign to be directed towards the westbound traffic to slow down, to show their speed, and possibly indicate that there is a blind entrance. And so as they're coming around that corner, and if they're at, even at 35 miles an hour, you know, you have a really good chance of somebody trying to come out, that would be a problem. So we'd like to request that radar sign, possibly even more patrolling, especially during the morning and the evening commute hours. And then we have a general question, if the city has a radar enhanced system that also takes pictures of license plates. If that's available, we would like to request that. So, no such technology?
Yeah, we don't have that, but
Well, we do have the sign.
Yeah, we do have the sign, and we can certainly, we have a, we have a request list, and we'll certainly add you to that. Usually it's, I think it's a couple of weeks or something before they, you know, get through the list to the next
Then do we, then how long do we get that sign there?
Um, do you know Colin about how long they leave it? A couple of weeks, I think.
Yeah, they can leave it a couple of weeks till the next
Yeah.
It's in the next
The next request?
The next request. We have a couple, so they could definitely look at doing that.
They may not have it out anywhere right now. I don't remember seeing it.
Last time I seen it was up on University, the warning of the construct.
Yeah, but we'll certainly make that request and ask them if they can put that out there and, and see if they can schedule a little bit of extra
And if they put it in the roadway, because they're, because of the curbing and the slope of the lawn and those trees on the, on the north side, you really couldn't put it in the street. Otherwise, you're blocking one of the lanes, and they're gonna, they're gonna clobber that sign. It's maybe a good deterrent, I know, I don't know. But, but I guess they'll have to figure out if they would put the sign on the opposite side of the Seven South or in between the trees or
Something like that, yeah. Okay.
But, but the, the point of, of warning, we'd like to request to be before they hit the Autumn Drive intersection. So as they're leaving Mill Hollow
East of Autumn Drive, right? Westbound.
It's the westbound
Yeah.
Just to the east of Autumn Drive. That's, that's the, the spot that we're having a real safety concern.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Where do you think that traffic's coming from? Because there's really nothing to the east there. You know what I mean?
There are people going to, to the, to the middle school down Seven South. There're people going to work. They're coming from the farms. You know, they're coming from church. I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's not a lot of, there's not a lot of heavy traffic flow, but
But fast traffic.
But it's, it's fast traffic.
That's, that's a pro, that's a broad, wide road, and people tend to
It's, it's got a nice, pretty gradual curve, and if you're not watching your speed and you're going downhill
Yeah.
You could easily hit 50 miles an hour.
Yeah.
And if someone sticks their nose out, and again, that line of sight problem, and they stick their nose out, they stick their nose out, then all of a sudden, you've got...
Well, we'll follow up with Natalie too, and see if she can get, follow up on getting those trees trimmed up too, so.
I'm sorry, who, who, who could you talk to about that?
Well, Natalie is our compliance officer, Natalie Powell, or Natalie, what's her name now?
That would be great. We've talked to people in, I'm not, I'm not sure who we've all talked to, but they've said there's very little the city can do because the trees are, belong to the property.
No, if they're blocking the line of sight, then, then we can ask the, the property owner to trim them up, and, and there's, there's some
If that came from you, that'd be more effective than what we're able to get right now, so.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
And is, about what time are you saying? Seven, you said commute times, so seven to about 8:30? It's best if we have the timeframe too, to tell the law enforcement?
Just the morning commute, you know?
And the afternoon commute to come back?
7:30 to 8:30.
Or just morning, so seven, seven to 8:30?
Seven to 8:30. Middle school's at 8:10 or 8:15, I'm not sure, but, yeah. So again, we don't know, we don't, we haven't done the traffic study to put out those counters trips to find out why and where they're coming from and where they're going, but they do.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? Public? Anyone, is there anyone online?
There is, but he's not asking.
No asking? Okay. All right, let's move on to item number six, which is our staff reports. We'll start with Mr. Matt Nielsen on the approval for a budget adjustment for the 700 radio system upgrades, phase one, for the city police, city fire, ambulance district, and fire district.
Yeah, so just a quick update on this. So this has actually been in our budget two prior years. It's just been delayed several years, this, this whole project, but they are finally done. The county's actually paid for it, and so we're just asking to, to put it into the budget. It would take a pretty substantial amount out of the contingency. It would take it clear down to about $97,000. And the total cost to the city would be just under $300,000. And this is phase one. So as we go through the budgeting process for fiscal year '25, there'll be a second amount for the second phase of improvements that they're looking to, to complete. And so I think I mentioned in here that it would come from fund balance, but it would actually come from contingency, because we have enough contingency. And then, yeah. So, any questions on this one?
What happens if we
For the new dispatch center?
What happens if we refuse to pay?
No, this is, this is for upgrades to the
They've already done it, so.
The radio system, the 700 system, essentially.
The towers or for?
It's the towers, all through the relays, all of that.
And you, and you said that we had it budget for the last two years.
We, we have, yep.
But then we, you say we have to take out the contingency, so.
It's because we didn't put it in the budget this year, because we thought it was gonna happen the last two years. And so
The funds are there.
The cash
We budgeted for them in previous years.
Yeah, the cash is there from prior years. And, you know, if you, the specifics, the only thi, this is the most specific I have, is that, you know, you have base station improvements, you have repeaters, Station One improvements. And then as you look at the full cost, this is, this is a tri-county, and so it's being split amongst three different counties. And then the share coming to the city, the 224.5 is for the police, and then they've also billed out for the fire department, a share, but of course, they're splitting that one third, one third, one third. And so the city's only paying a third of that, so it ends up being $74,800 out of the fire.
So this is probably for the relay towers and out the, our mountain, and probably up on the Island Park, I imagine.
Well, it says Crest Creek was included in it as well. And so, and I, I honestly don't know all the locations, to be honest.
That's probably it.
I'm just curious, are the other two counties, is it Fremont and Teton, or what are the other two counties?
No, it's actually, it's, it's Jefferson, Madison, and Bonneville.
Okay.
That's why it's down there.
All right. So this is an action item, so I would, I would, unless there's any other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this budget adjustment.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve this budget adjustment to, for the 700 radios.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We'll go ahead with that. Item number two is a budget adjustment consideration for the Romance Theater and Tabernacle for painting the tabernacle, repointing, and brick repair for the Romance Theater and the change order for tabernacle repointing.
Yeah, so let me, so with this one, just to kind of give you where we're at on this project. So originally, we, we anticipated the repointing at the tabernacle to be about $850,000. That's what we put in the budget. But the bids came back lower, and current bids I'm showing were encumbered at about $580,000. And so as they were there doing that work, there were a few change orders that came up on the tabernacle of things that, that we could look at and have them addressed while they're here. And then we also had some issues over the romance that we had them go take a look. And so this is the results of, of what they're recommending. So if you look up here, this one is for the Romance Theater, but they're basically saying that they'll come in and, and fix some failed mortar joints on the exterior, and then they'll come in and they'll, they'll repair and recoat, I guess you'd call it, what they call the parge area, which I think we decided that's the bottom, right down by the sidewalk, essentially. And that gray area that you see. And then they would do an exterior chemical cleaning and remove any, you know, damaged sealants and, and other joints as they do that. So the total cost on that would be $91,250. They feel like they have enough people that they could complete it in the same timeframe as their, the tabernacle job. We felt like it would be prudent to probably do that while they're here and mobilized. And so that, that's the first one. Any questions on the romance before I jump into the tabernacle?
I had a quick question for you. It says that it strongly recommended the City of Rexburg consider someone scoped the roof drain to determine.
Yeah.
Is that part of the plan here? Because it seems to me, you know, if we fix this but not fix the cause, we're gonna be right back where we started not too long.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we would need to do that. They would not do that. We'd need to just reach out to someone else to come do that. And so, so yeah, I would, I would, I would hope that we would do that.
Yeah, we really need to do that, because like you say, if it's leaking into the walls, that's not a good thing.
Yeah.
So we'll see if we can find somebody that, that can do that.
Yeah.
So then if it is leaking into the walls, then what is next?
Then
There may be more change orders.
So does it make sense to figure that out first before you do the other stuff?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we could certainly look at that. I, do you know where this drain is, Keith?
I think any of that work would probably be done from the inside, whereas this is all exterior.
It's the west side?
Not middle of the roof, but middle of the building.
On the west side? So I, so how much do you think this is impacting what the work they're doing of that 90,000? I mean, it's, it's a small part of it, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we gotta determine. We did, I'm trying to remember if our crews did the top down or if we were down the bottom. We're trying to figure out where and when. Because it actually goes down to the basement, and then goes out of it on the west side, and then runs down towards the alley. But our camera wasn't long enough to get, to see where it finally ends up. We did try doing that with the city's support camera. On every, by the camera, we did it from the top, but it didn't, didn't come from the bottom. So we can double, I can double check that.
The concern is, we don't know what's causing, they, they decided they couldn't tell what was causing the water to discolor and calcified. And so until we decide what's going on with the drain, it might be that we'd be fixing the brick, and the drain would then recount, re-leak out into the brick again.
Yeah.
That's their reasoning for this.
We need to wait.
Well, and this is, this work wouldn't be done immediately. It'd give us time to be able to figure that out.
They just be watching the drain, because what it is, is it's a, it's a, what's this cover? It's like a pyramid. Yeah, there's a pyramid up on the couch, and if it plugs, then it flows, it builds a big deep puddle on the roof. The roof itself is only five years old. So it's not leaking through the membrane. It's getting into the drain and either leaking out on its way to, its journey to the storm drain, or it's not leaking at all, and the calcification is just there because it's 100 years old. But that's the part they would want us to check, because they too don't want us to fix it, only to have it redo. But that's the part they would want us to check, because they too don't want us to fix it, only to have it redo.
Recur, yeah. Yes.
So then, if it, what if it, will it cost a lot of money to fix that? No? Okay.
Not if it's as simple as a plug, it, it would be hiring somebody with a longer camera than Keith has, that can go all the way down to hit the main line, determine whether we have an obstruction in the flow. If we do, we send the rotor router guys down there. It's, it's unlikely that it would take more than just a cleaning of the drain.
Yeah, unlikely, but.
Possible.
Possible.
Well, well, so, so I feel like we should know that first, because if we approved this and then we found out that this was a big fix, then we're actually approving a lot more money than what we're looking at here, because we'd have to fix that first.
Well, you'd only be approving this if there was an additional amount.
Well, I know, but if we fixed this, we would need to fix that, so to me, they're tied together.
They're both that gonna have to be fixed.
Yeah.
They're both gonna have to be done. So, I mean, and we don't have to approve this tonight, I mean, it's not gonna be done right away either, so, I mean, you know.
Yeah, you don't have to.
We can.
Or we can make that part of the motion.
What's that?
To scope the roof, yeah, determine that as part of the motion.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
But if I understand this right, this damage could have been done long, over a long time, and we just don't know, but it is good to sit there and do the scope before we do this, fix in this part too, so I, I do agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can make that part of the motion if you want, that'd be great.
Okay.
Be fine.
Jump to the tabernacle, okay? Okay, so on this one, uh, the first one there is, um, so they, they looked at all of the exterior painting, and so when you look at that, there's windows, doors, there's soffit, essentially those are the three areas. You can see the count there, there's seventy-five windows, ten doors, three hundred and forty linear feet of soffit. And so, they would come in and, and basically sand and prep that, and then repaint it to match. And so, because if you ever look at it, even though we've been replacing windows over the last decade or so, they're different colors. And, uh, and the soffit and fascia, we have that in the capital improvement plan to address at some point as well anyways. And then the doors, uh, are also in the capital improvement plan to address at some point. And so, the thought was, while we have them there, working on it, um, it would be good, it'd be good to have their crews do it too, so that they, you know, you don't have one contractor blaming another contractor for spilling paint on the newly sealed work of the, the, the brick and whatnot, or the rock. And then, uh, the other thing is, is they, there was some structural issues with the, the chimney that's on the west side. Um, and so as you look at that, there's a few there that kind of talk about having to go in and, and do some work on those caps and, and whatnot. And then some sealing, and then, if you go to the front of the building, if, for those that have been over there, there's kind of some glass tiles that you see at the landing, at the top. So there's an area there where they would do some repairs. And then, as you look at those stairs, we've been talking about whether to just replace those stairs altogether, that's also in the capital improvement plan several years down. Uh, but they felt like structurally those stairs are in great condition, and so they would just come in and, and basically take the parch coating that's failing and fix all that, and try to reseal all that so that we don't get water down into the museum portion. And so, so the total cost on that is a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred.
Yeah, well, I think one thing that'd be worth mentioning too for the council is, when we were looking at, thinking that we were gonna have to tear out those stairs and redo those and the sides, that was a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
And this is, this is gonna save us that by, these guys, I've been pretty impressed by these guys, they're, they're very can-do, you know, yet, they've got a lot of experience, and they said, oh yeah, they can fix that, and, and they were pretty confident they can fix it and make it look good, so that we don't have to do that, we don't have to tear anything out, they can just repair what's there, which is, which is good news.
Well, and the, and the best part is that, that it's all really within budget of what we
Yeah, of what we budgeted for.
anticipated spending anyways, and so, so that's great. So the, what the budget adjustment would be essentially, the only adjustment would be to take the transfer from the general fund instead of sending it to the tabernacle, we'll send it to the romance theater. If you guys want to move forward on that, ninety-one thousand three hundred dollars roughly. And so, and then if you wanna, i- it's up to you whether you pass it or if you want to restructure how you do it, that's fine as well. Or you could pass it with the statement that staff look into that issue before we proceed.
Or we have them do that work, yeah. Is that what you want to do, that way?
Well, I, I know, um, I, I think we should take care of our older buildings, I don't have a problem with that. But I also know that sometimes when we get in there, it ends up being a lot more money than we had anticipated, and I think we have a limited budget with other priorities besides just these buildings. And so, I mean, my preference would be to wait on approving that romance money until we had the scope done, so that we made sure it wasn't going to be more than what we're just talking about here. I don't have a problem with the tabernacle stuff, but I would like to wait on the romance until we make.
Thing about it is though, is, I mean, even if we find something that is gonna cost more, it's still gotta be fixed.
Right, but it doesn't mean it has to be now, or in the next fiscal year, we might find that we have other priorities that come first.
Well, the longer we let it go, the worse it's gonna get, is the only thing.
I know, but we do have a limited amount of money, I'm just saying, we don't have enough money for everything, police stations and everything else, so we have to make decisions.
Yeah. Well.
My, my understanding is that the eight hundred and fifty thousand that was budgeted for the tabernacle, we didn't need all of that.
Correct.
For the, for just the repointing. So we're able to use what money we, we already budgeted for to expand the scope a little bit, help out with the romance, and expand the scope a little bit in what the tabernacle, and not expand any more money.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
As long as we don't find out that there's something bigger, that was what my point.
Well, yeah, one way or the other, that's gotta be fixed, so, is that an interior, um, drain?
Yeah.
Is it accessible?
Down through the wall, no.
It's not accessible?
Only accessible down the bottom, like in the basement area?
Yeah.
Where it goes out into the, the street.
Okay.
There, so you can see it there, and at the roof.
So is it contained in the brick wall, that brick exterior wall? How, I have a question about the budget, how are we, if we do approve this and the romance, where are we at still with that eight hundred fifty thousand dollar budget, we still under budget?
Yeah, on the eight fifty we are, and then I put a little, um, summary right here. I put twenty-three, but I really meant twenty-four, right here. So, and this is strictly the general fund transfers to the arts funds. So there's really three primary funds, right, the tabernacle, romance, and cultural arts. So right now, I, I really feel like with the projected amounts, based on the forecasting that we're doing right now, that they, they may be over budget a few thousand dollars, you know, in those forecasts. So it's really not, not too bad, really. And so, and that's really just the picture of the art side, right? In looking at the general fund, um, depending on our revenues, we may be a little bit, uh, over on our expenses, or our net, sorry, because, um, our sales tax hasn't came in quite as strong as, as the state had forecasted. And so I'm watching that pretty closely, but, you know, we may be, I would say anywhere from a hundred to three hundred thousand short, so. But we may also get that back in the next two quarters, because the next two quarters are typically your strongest quarters for sales tax, so. And I think the, the last quarter, they should be using our new census numbers, so that may give us a little bit of a boost.
That'll help boost us quite a bit, actually. So, all right, well, council, would it, is there a motion that someone would like to make to take care of this?
I'll make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion that we approve these budget adjustments as stated, with the stipulation that we hear back about the scope on the romance theater before proceeding.
Before we proceed with that, yeah, I think that's good. Okay, second to that motion?
I second that.
Second by Councilmember Reece, sir, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes and we will move forward as proposed, as stated. All right, thank you, Matt, appreciate that, and we get, we'll be seeing more of him a lot in the next few weeks. All the budget meetings coming up, we'll look forward to seeing all of you here for those, so. Right, item B is, uh, the only thing we had on public works is a sanitation truck, and we still, turns out that we've still got some work to do on that, so we're gonna skip that for tonight. So, uh, the only other thing on mayor's business is, uh, I have this little card I'm gonna just pass around to let you know. It's a card from the, uh, let's see, I forget, it's the Daughters, Daughters of Utah Painters? No, Daughters of the American Revolution. It's just a thank you for reading that proclamation that we did a few weeks ago about, uh, supporting military caregivers and things, so I'll just pass that around and let you look at it. Uh, the item A that is on the agenda is, uh, the Arbor Day proclamation, which we do every year. So we will just go ahead and proceed with that at this point. Uh, this is proclaiming May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, uh, special day, uh, be, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide wildlife, habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving up paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values when they're not blocking the view of traffic, right? And enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Jerry Merrill, the mayor of the city of Rexburg, do hereby proclaim May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we actually moved that just for information, we used to have it on Wednesdays, and we moved it to Thursdays, just so that we could all, uh, participate in our, or what we call our Flower Day, uh, celebration, where we plant the flowers, but, uh, proclaim May sixteenth as Arbor Day in the city of Rexburg, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This will be adopted, uh, today, the first day of March, twenty twenty-four. Okay, we just need a motion to, uh, approve the ratification or to ratify this proclamation, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, let's move on to item number, uh, eight, there's nothing there. Item number nine is our calendared bills, we have a tabled item, which is the contract for the community ice rink. We are almost there on that, and I know we've been saying that for, uh, we said that last time, but we still just have a couple of small details we're working out with those folks, and, uh, we were pretty sure that we will have that available for next time. So we'll leave that tabled, if that's okay. Okay, the, um, item number nine B one is ordinance number thirteen thirteen to rezone ten forty West Main Street from Mixed Juice, uh, to Community Business Center. And, uh, this is a second reading, so, is there any questions about this before we proceed on the second reading? I think we all understand what, what we're doing here. So if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to second read ordinance thirteen thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved that we consider ordinance number thirteen thirteen, second read.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion is considered second read. Ordinance number thirteen is to rezone fifty-two North Third West from low-density residential two and mixed use to high-density residential one. Uh, this one we also talked about last time, is there any questions or comments about this before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance thirteen fourteen, second read.
Also move, mayor.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to item number C, which is our third readings. Number one is ordinance number thirteen ten, amendment to ordinance number eight ten, parade in public assembly to prohibit personal property placed in the public right-of-way until six P M. the day prior to an event, and designate areas of park facility reservation. Uh, is there any questions or discussion about this before we move forward? Hearing none, oh, yes.
Mayor, one question, do, do we hear anything back on this one we did the first read?
I have not heard anything. I don't believe staff, Mariana.
Did we hear anything on that?
Any, any comments? Okay, yeah, I don't believe we have. So, uh, I'd entertain a motion to consider thirteen ten, third read.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I will, I would, uh, move that we consider ordinance number thirteen ten, third read.
Thank you, second to that motion.
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reece, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. Item number two, ordinance number thirteen eleven, to rezone two forty-five Rodney Drive from public facilities to low-density residential two. Any discussion on this item before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance thirteen eleven, third read.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council President Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes, we will consider that, third read. Item number three is ordinance number thirteen twelve, to rezone ten twenty-two West Main Street from Mixed Juice to Community Business Center. Any comments about this before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider, uh, ordinance thirteen twelve, third read.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make the motion that we consider ordinance number thirteen twelve, third read.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, was that you, Eric? Eric Erickson? Okay, thank you, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance number thirteen, we'll consider thirteen twelve, thirteen eleven, and thirteen ten, all third read, and we are done with those three items. Right, item number ten is a consent calendar, which consists of the minutes from the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, and the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions or comments about these two items before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar and pay the bills.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reece, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, we will enter the minutes and pay the bills. Is there anything else to be brought up? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, um, in visiting with the Parks and Rec staff at their last meeting, I brought up the issue of the, um, committee, citizens.
Oh, committee.
Advisory committee. They're, they, they're willing to do whatever we as a council want them to do, but they need some direction, so, there was a little discussion about the possibility of maybe combining the Parks and Rec and Trails into one committee, which seems to make a little sense, they seem to work together. So, we just need to give them some direction and let them know that they will, they'll do whatever we ask them to do. We just, if that's what we want to do, then we'll just let them know that that's what, what we'll do and go forward from there. So, any discussion or?
I, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I think there's not really enough to have individual committees, but I think it would be nice even for things like, um, like we get an email about grants for trails, and we need to have suggestions of where to put the trails, it's like, uh, it's one where you need them for commuting, and it would be really nice if we had a committee of people who bike, and we could ask them, where do you think trails should go, you know, things like that. Or, um, with the Parks Committee before, we would just kind of assign members of the committee to look at different parks in the city, just keep an eye on them for things that were broken. Like I had a resident contact me last week about, um, some bolts that have been sticking out at Nature Park for two years, and they said it's been two years. I don't go to that park, because I don't live by it, my children kind of aged out of parks. So anyway, it would be really nice if we had, you know, those are the kind of things I'm envisioning with, with it, so, I think it'd be great.
What I would suggest is, uh, maybe if, if you know people that you think might be interested, submit their names, uh, for a committee, and we'll look at getting it organized, and, uh, and then we'll decide when and where we're gonna meet and all those kinds of.
And we still have people on the committees, like.
That were on previously.
That were on previous, and some of them have asked me when we're gonna have a meeting.
They, they still consider themselves on the committee, yeah, and we, we really haven't disbanded it.
No, so I think.
They just have been kind of inactive.
Yeah, I think we would need to start by contacting the people in the Trails Committee and the Parks Committee and asking who wants to continue serving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, yeah.
And I believe there's a bike club out, there's a couple of bike clubs out there. Maybe we reach out to them, maybe get one or a couple from there. I'll see if I can get some names on that, but.
Yeah, because we had, like, we had Joe Hill on there, you know? We had good, good biking people on that committee. It's just it never met, so.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, and then if you know anybody else that you think would really be interested in that, please submit their names and we'll try to get that formed up and, and going again. They're still interested. I'm just making some notes here as far as what we need to do.
And then we really need to kind of define a scope of what, what they, what this committee would, how they would function. What, what kinds of things we're asking from that committee. So that's, we're going to have to be part of that discussion also.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Just got to ask Keith. What, where we at on our construction, on the reconstruction, you know, the, the crab projects on the roads?
Crabs are about done, I think.
They got it done in front of my house, that's all.
Yeah, and it's, there's a lot of, a lot of delays and stuff out there. But the ones that have been finished up are really nice. I think people are, are liking that. They don't like the delays and everything. But as we work through it, you know, we're trying our best to, you know, get them done as quick as we can. And, uh, I think we've got done, I think we've probably done more road construction this early than, than ever before, I think. You know, so it's good to get that all done. Um, and then we'll just be working through the interchanges as we go through the summer. So we'll be living with that all summer. So just tell people that, you know, when they ask, why are you doing it all at once? Just say, because we have a limited time that we can do it. A limited time that we can get the contractors when they're available to do it. And so we just have to get it done when we can. And, uh, we'll just all have to be patient. And thankfully, Ryan, I said in her prayer that we need to, we need to love each other, right? That's what I put in my mayor's message through all of this. We need to, we need to still love one another.
I've got good comments. People are happy if they're.
Yeah, yeah, the, the ones that are done are looking good, so that's, that's nice. Okay, well, thank you everyone for coming. Uh, we will see you again in a couple of weeks. And we'll see you in the weeks, in the few days coming up for budget meetings and things. So thank you everyone for being here. We appreciate your time and, uh, we are adjourned.